Good evening, we're in the night school meeting this Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty, six o'clock. We're in the citizens' total lives the board in the eighteen eighty-seven building. I'd like to ask, I'd like to call the need to order and ask this.
This is Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gay.
Here.
Mrs. Ingraham.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Mrs. Grahalski.
Here.
And Mr. Reed, who is not able to join us tonight.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. A remote to this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. Do we have any community participation? Or would you like to do anything to read in, Jason?
No.
All right, well, it's thanks for reading that. And go to banner presentation from Durham Bus Service.
Hi, my name is Lisa Mackus, I'm the job manager of the bus company down here, and I apologize for the delay of me hitting him. But we wanted to just give a small token of appreciation for your partnership with us through this pandemic. It has meant a tremendous amount to us, all the drivers signed, and we really appreciate that you guys supported us through it, that we were able to support our drivers and keep them full through the end of the school year, and if weren't a lot of this, we did that, so we greatly, greatly appreciated it, and just wanted to to give a little banner of thanks.
We certainly appreciate it. We certainly appreciate everything that our bus drivers do and you do, to keep our kids safe and get them to come from school.
Thank you very much, been a pleasure. I have people in the community saying, what a great idea, they didn't have children in school, but they would see the buses out there, and they thought it was fantastic.
Yeah, the drivers really loved doing food deliveries because it kept them in contact with the lot, because I tried to sign the drivers to areas where they drove, so they were able to keep up with their kids. Yeah. So thank you very, very much, appreciate it.
I wonder what you think.
You too.
All right, Kelly's and Career Academy student presentation.
Hi, that's their virtual. Good evening, I'm Kelly Dumas, and I'm the principal of the Career and College Academy at Gateway. The youth built students put together a presentation. Mr. Trattier is here, in spirit.
Let's see, do we have some of the kids online there?
No, no.
All right.
And so, the first, the first slide that they did, they, they did the team, so they put their names, and then they put Mr. Trattier, and what was it, Alan? Their construction, they're like, the team is bigger, the team is bigger, but I have to say, Mr. Trattier was very touched. To be on the first, the first cut of the team, so.
First team.
The first team, first wave. And so, the Elkhorn Youth Build Project is, is a federally funded grant program for the Career and College Academy, and we, you know, the, the big shiny thing is we are given the ability to build a home in the community for a family who traditionally would be able to get a bank loan and, and purchase a home, and so we work with Community Action Incorporated, of Rock and Walworth County, they help us purchasing the, the labs, and then also helping us find a family, because they do a lot of wraparound services. But for our program, we are fifty percent academic instruction, forty percent hands-on construction training, and ten percent career and life skills. Because while the big shiny thing is the house, the thing that will shine so much longer and further is the work that we do with the students. Because it is intentional work that we do, and just even from the beginning, them selecting their career path, their strategic job placement plan, and then articulating that in the year of follow-up, where the, the team works with them to, to really fulfill their plan. So, we have many partners who work with us. We are just thankful for the, the community involvement that we've had. There have been a lot of organizations who have been working with both our team and our students to help show them that there is so much in applicable skills and careers that could use the skills that they're learning. And so, we have some pictures, so from the, when, when you all were out there, we had our groundbreaking, we do have a foundation, they are rough framing. And we, we are really getting the experience, because it's cold. It's cold, and it's snowy, so they are really figuring out that it's very different to be on a site, because there is no warm house. We have, they have like knocked on the van door, and we're like, no, you have to go build a house. We made sure that they are, they are very warm, but they are, they are loving it. And one of the, the key pieces of Mr. Trattier's role in our job specialist position is that they're actually going to businesses and organizations and seeing the ways that they can apply the skills that they learn on the site to other organizations. So, one with CCI, Corporate Contractors Incorporated, out of Beloit, and they saw a variety of projects going on in this, in this industrial construction pathway. And Mr. Trattier, correct me if I'm wrong, two students were completely floored.
Yeah, the, the students quickly realized the difference between residential and commercial construction, and actually, two of them immediately after approached me, because we've talked about youth apprenticeships and getting connected with CCI. So, about a week ago, two weeks ago, I had a virtual meeting with two people in their HR. They're looking into it, looking into this opportunity, and, but they, and hopefully it'll come to fruition, and, but in addition, they did jump on as one of our business partners right away. They were, I was very impressed by the, by their company.
And they actually got to see the Lincoln Academy being built in Beloit. So it's a charter school in Beloit that they were actually able to see, you know, just the, the ways and means that they're using in an industrial context to build the school, so they, they thought.
Is this the Lincoln Academy, or?
Mr. Trattier?
That is the view from the academy. So, so CCI is building the academy, and then there's some additional work. I believe this is an old shopping mall that they're doing some work. They have three major projects going on in Beloit. This is considered one of their projects on this site. They're also constructing the new Beloit Snappers Stadium, or what used to be called the Snappers, and then just, I believe, to the north of that, they were doing some large-scale condo construction. They finished one while they were roughing the inside in with electric and HVAC, but they were getting close to that, moving to the next phase, and then they had two more similar facilities that they were building shortly thereafter.
And that is the sign that you will stay at this site. The youth introduce themselves to the neighborhood by writing letters and delivering them to all of the residents to let them know what, what we're doing on the site and why we're doing that. More pictures at the site. The students also went to Moe, a metals fabrication company. And Adam's electric. Precision Club. We had a, a student interview for an apprenticeship, because they are completing their six months of the build Friday. So they're all looking at how they're going to start articulating these skills, and so we had a student interview and is looking to start their apprenticeship at Precision Club. And so what's next? The build ends on Friday. All of the students are registered in classes at Gateway Technical College. For the spring semester, they're looking at job placement and apprenticeships and just start the, the one year.
Hello, everybody, this is Elkhorn Youth Build, and today we're just going to give you a couple of facts about Youth Build. But the first reason is, why did we join Youth Build? We joined Youth Build for the experience and the knowledge that we get to develop and what we get to deal with hands-on experience and training. And it's really cool, because you also get a bonus because then you get paid, and getting a check on top of the work is even better. And how Youth Build has really changed us is, we all, at least me and a couple of us, that really know each other, moved in from a couple of other states. All came in, we built, we built a really strong group of apprenticeship, and it just built us and changed us. And yeah, and then our change was basically, it gives you credits, and from other public schools, I guess school is a little harder. And then it's here, because you get credit from the Youth Build program, that really helps out a lot, or some people, they go to work.
What we've done, what we've done is, we are interviewing right now for our next cohort, who will enter mental toughness the first week in January that we come back. And that has been a really awesome opportunity, the whole team has been interviewing. Students were interested in the program, and so it shows that kind of our message and our mission has gotten out, and that students were interested in taking up this opportunity, not just students at the CCA, but students from all of our partner school districts of Elkhorn Lake Geneva, Williams Bay, have wanted to, which is really awesome. A lot of enthusiasm, a lot of really great skills that we're excited to employ on the site, and a great experience. So I thank all of you for your support. Mr. Trattier, thank you for all of your hard work.
You're welcome. We have our first business partner meeting on Thursday at five, four, I'm sorry, four o'clock, so looking forward to that.
Yeah, I've got my hand up, I, I found that little bone, but I didn't get called on. Yeah, boring my life, but anyway, I'll lower my hand now, so if you notice. I, I like their speech, and one of the things that I've gone up to the job site a couple times, just out of morbid curiosity. See how they're coming along, and I see that we're, we're stopping on the eighteenth. Is there another group coming in then to continue with that?
Yes.
Okay, is it going to be another eight kids or so?
Yeah, we are, we're really shooting for ten, but yes, we have interviews right now. The cohort will be selected by the end of the week, there will be the holiday break, and then they start mental toughness. And mental toughness is where we're really looking at those team-building skills. What do you do if, you know, you have a conflict with somebody, but you still got to build a house? And then also the safety certifications that we, we really need to make sure that everybody passes and is certified before they go on onto the site. So that is the first two weeks of January, and then they are back out at the site.
Well, some of the students that are involved right now continue and build on their skills.
So we had one student from the first cohort, where we, we had COVID and the shutdown, continue on with the billing component of this cohort. All of the students of this current cohort, that is cohort two, have decided to take Gateway Technical College courses and start internship.
In the heated environment.
Right. So they are, they are, they are, they are very excited to start going to Gateway. Today, we had our Gateway Day at the CCA, where we, we do a deep dive into like where your class is, let's look at the syllabus, let's go get your books and supplies, and so as a cohort, what Joey said, Joey Gona said, they are very extremely close. And so you're, you're going to see that they, they all took like the same two to three classes together, and so they had numbers. They are tight, they are really tight, so it's really neat to see them now start articulating their placement.
And then I wanted to follow up as an old classroom teacher and thinking of engagement. I, I love the idea of linking and the engagement part of the learning and rewarding the application of their skills built and the knowledge acquired. So with the Elkhorn Youth Build, he said that they get paid. My question was, do they get paid for being in the cohort? Do they get rewarded by hours worked? Or do they get some type of reward by an achievement that they gained? Such as, the allotment would be six hundred dollars for the cohort, and if they get an A, they get a full return on it. If they get a B, because I think we want to embrace the good habits of engagement and commitment. And I'm just wondering if, if we've thought of that and a way to continue with that. Because if you talk to a lot of employers, that's one of the biggest difficulties they're having right now.
Absolutely, that is, that, thank you for, for bringing that up. Mr. Trun and I work very hard on what we call the stipend schedule, and we want to reward students for achievements, for hard work. So our stipend schedule not only rewards students for, for just daily work and attendance, so they have a daily stipend, but at the end of the week, they have an additional stipend that they can earn with hard work and good attendance. So there, there is that piece. Then we also have stipends for certification. A high school diploma, getting their high school diploma, and then also working throughout that whole follow-up year. There's additional stipends as they meet criteria during that follow-up year. So I, I absolutely agree with you that we want to also model that, you know, greater work and effort does get rewarded. But it's basically an extrinsic, so whatever reward you're going for, making sure that we're, we're getting.
Yeah, because that's the big thing I look at is habits are hard to break, whether they're good or bad, so let's institute great habits right from the get-go. And some of these, these kids really embrace that when they know that someone cares and rewards them.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and one of the, the pieces that Mr. Trun and Mr. Trin have worked on with us was a, a time sheet that the students could submit, and going through that approval process, so they understood how within an organization, somebody does get paid. And so thank you for approving their pay. They would want me to thank you. And then the, the second piece is the fact that they had to have a bank account. And so one of the first things that they had to do with their families is, is go open a bank account. So all the way around, I see that the program is really helping them think a little more broadly about adulthood and work.
And they had to have a bank account, because we do direct deposits.
So they had to have a self-security card, and all that. Mobile ID.
Right, and right now they are working with UW Extension on a land skills course. Where they're actually, they're going through the program called Rent Smart, and it's really about, you know, all of those what's next questions, housing, more banking, and responsible living.
Thank you.
Dan and Paul, I'm sorry, when I flip over, when I have the agenda, I can't see you or your hand, it's right. This was to dedicate three parcels of land as Wisconsin's school force. I'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Cruz and Ms. Hart for the presentation.
All right, so again, welcome, my name is David Cruz, and most of you probably have not met yet, but Bailey Hart is my cohort now, so.
Welcome.
So you guys have access to, we give you all the materials, obviously you guys are fully aware, we have spent a lot of energy into helping build our program, build our school district with the last referendums, we built tremendous facilities, and part of that is that we've also purchased some land that's, that's become part of that concept. And I'll be honest, I probably sat a little bit kind of quieter, because I know everyone had the big, you know, the idea for the buildings, all those types of items, and I was mentally kind of going, hey, there's some great opportunity with the land that's not being used there. And now this year, due to multiple reasons, due to not traveling to big conferences and having a second-hand teacher, now is the time to kind of felt like it was kind of good to be able to make some of those things happen. So Bailey and I have been working on this idea about, you know, we want to create some outdoor land space, and we got some different ideas. But one of them, and this is, the idea's not new, because I remember when I was doing some teaching at the middle school, I heard people say, it'd be cool to have a school forest, but it never really went anywhere as, as kind of going through those dynamics. Obviously, between the land purchase on Market Street, and now with the options program, we have some new land, both of them have some wooded property. So those two pieces of property originally became part of the conversation, and then a little bit later, all of a sudden it started to dawn to me is that we've got out at Tibbetts, there is a small chunk of wooded property that's underutilized as well. So collectively, what we are looking at doing is that we are asking the school district, as part of one of our, our goals within the program, is to officially set aside three parcels of property as official school forests. Now, the sides we've got there, really, what does that mean for us? One is the school district, we commit to setting aside as a school forest. We need to develop, we have a year to develop an educational plan, so we can give, provide educational opportunities to our students and community, four K through twelve. We have to agree to manage it in a sustainable way, but we get a chance to work with our DNR, state forester, as part of that process as well. So it's basically saying, as a district, hey, we, we've got some property, and we want to use this way to teach people about forestry, forestry education, environmental science, and, you know, we get to kind of decide where we want to go with that, with that property. Key advantage to us by being a, to be designated as an official school forest, and then being put on the Wisconsin School Forest System makes us eligible for free trees and free seedlings, and so new plant material, plus the Department of Natural Resources, their state forester, they will work with us. And so once we get this passed, I'll file a paperwork, and then hopefully, within a month or two, is that I'll meet with our, our state forester, and they'll go through, and we basically have to put together a ten-year plan, and we modify it, and we kind of put it in place and make those things work.
Sorry, did you want me to pull this up?
No, that's okay, I'm, I'm just, I think you guys kind of go through, you can kind of go through this if you like. But three properties, yes, so right now, Jason has up there, the one that is on the, on the Market Street, the one that's highlighted in blue. So when you think about, so it's to the long Market Street, East Market Street, but on the west side of Highway twelve and Highway forty-three. So it's that entire stretch, yes, it's not all forested, but I worked with the school forest coordinator, she's, no, that's great, because it's, whether it's prairie and wetland, if we want to expand it, they are all okay with that, so it's all those properties. Part that's highlighted is the part that is behind the options building. Most of that is stuff that's, has been forested. Both those properties, there's not been many, there have not been very many people in there, in the last, probably thirty years. Based off some of the vegetation I see in there, it's, it's pretty unique, but, so we're looking at managing that. It does allocate, it's not going to the far south edge there, because of what the land purchase, approximately that location is where they, where that new property line is, along that south edge. And then the last one is out at Tibbetts, and then, and I was, I reached out to Mr. Frost out at Tibbetts, and that's kind of a coronation, so it's that upper northwest corner. It's about three acres out there. It looks like, I happened to be out there one day when Mr. Frost was there, so we chatted a little while. There's not much out there, but Mr. Frost is pretty confident that those, some of the trees that are planted there are ones that he planted when he was there at, at Tibbetts. They're not very fast-growing trees, so my philosophy is that we would try to get some new trees in there pretty quickly to hopefully get that to expand a little bit. So those are the three parcels. Like I said, we, we really see there's a lot of great opportunity, you know, except, and Billy, when they're part of her, part of her first year, she worked with the Farm Bureau.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, when I was in college, I got to do an internship with our Ag in the Classroom program on at my home county. And so with that, one of my jobs was to build these totes that covered all types of agricultural topics with relevant books and literature and activities and lessons. They were just essentially things that were ready to go, that element, that, excuse me, elementary teachers or teachers anywhere in the district would be able to rent from us and borrow, and we filled them and delivered them, or they could pick them up. So the idea kind of behind this education plan that we said that we would have to develop and put forth would kind of be modeled along that, and Dave and I were talking one day, and I said, oh, well, you know, I kind of have some experience with these, she's like, well, that's exactly what I was thinking we could do. So it worked out really nice, that we're both thinking the same thing. Now, obviously, we have four K through twelve that we hope to utilize this with, so we would have different grade levels. And, but, like I said, the books, the literature, the lessons, that would target those specific age groups, and they would change throughout time. It would change, we would do some trials, you know, with leaf identification, there would be some wildlife stuff, we do have wetland areas, so we would incorporate some of that wetland information as well, but it would essentially look like a tote that would get delivered, and then the teacher, that classroom teacher would have access to all those things that they could work through, it was just already done for them.
So when it comes down to it, there is a, there is a resolution, where there's lots of wherethas and here-to's and all of those items. But very simply, what it's saying is that as a district, you're saying that we own the property, we promise to manage it in a sustainable way, and put together a, a, an education program to make it being a useful outdoor educational classroom. So again, without taking a lot of your time, but I guess if you have any questions, we'll, we'll be happy to answer questions you may have, or move from there.
Whenever I first saw this too, I was wondering, because Christmas tree farms are forestry. Do you have any inkling that it's a possibility you might try something like that, or not?
That is one of the ideas that's floating around, yes.
I'm not right there.
Yep, no, Christmas trees, and the first, the virtual plan will be is that we'll have to put together a committee, which will have to decide, you know, what is our, what is our land use plan for those.
I didn't know that, because you're working with DNR and all that, if you have to have something in place before we sign this, or as we're signing it, that we have to be certain, you know, specific things.
The only thing we'll have is that, like, when we, when we meet with the forester, we'll, we'll lay out some of our goals, and then the forester, their job is to kind of help us lay out what that plan is, and then go from there.
And again, with all the things that we try to do within our department, and, you know, as what kind of started this, how can we build community with some of these things that we're doing? And I think that that's a really awesome way to, you know, one, teach our kids something, share it with our school district, and then also bring in the community piece as well.
And eventually, we want to get in past the, I've already been taking the forestry class, we've been out on Market Street stuff. That was pretty messy there, and we're working on, we're working on trying to clear some trails so we can get some access, but I mean, they're, they enjoy their time out there.
You also, on the options one, there's that, the trail, it says access to the, to the.
Yes.
So access to, to what? Because you still can get to that farmland, I'm assuming it's farmland.
Yes, well, well, a couple, a couple issues, so one is that the, that little field space that's on that north edge, that is our property, it is a field, but in all honesty, is that just the north of that, we want to be able to use that, because the, the experiment will hopefully start using it a little bit. During the, once that growing season is done, we really don't have any access with the larger vehicles unless you're going through the equipment fields during that time. So right now, that white area is, it's, it's, it's a non-mowed grass area, so it's a grass area, so it just has to be one of those things where we eventually need to maintain a little bit. Eventually, down the road, it may not be a bad idea, is that, that north parking lot, you might just put a, a clear path through there to get that easier access as well. But again, just, because right now it's a grass area.
That land is not rented out to be farmed right now? A lot of times, when you buy land, it's already been being farmed.
Corn a couple of years ago. Yeah, a couple of years ago, it's corn, it's an extra, well, this is. It's an extra, well, this summer, the summer, the, it got planted this year. Yeah, as we go through that, but that's okay. But, but so that, yeah, that long story there. Not a bad, but, yes. But so that, the consequence of that, it used to be, wasn't heavily used. When St. Pat's owned it, you know, the Cook Family, sometimes it was, sometimes they, the church used it for a couple of years. But again, it was kind of underutilized. And it's kind of a wet area, which makes it sometimes a little difficult to...
Okay, so you have plans though for that as well, other than the forest?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's, that's, why I was wondering, why do we need to get to it if they're planting from the other side?
Yeah, if you, if you look at all the empty land space, I've got lots of them.
Okay, that's good. That's good to hear.
I think this is great.
Yes.
Yeah, we just need approval of the formal resolution. And again, and one of the things that we checked is it doesn't, it provides us with access to a lot of resources, development from an instructional side. It also doesn't lock the school board in 20 years from now if they, they need a different use.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions? Or...
I move to approve the resolution and dedicate three parts of the land described in Appendix A through C, totaling 32.7 acres as a school forest as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I move and second to approve the resolution and dedicate the three parcels of the land described in Appendix A through C, totaling 32.7 acres as Wisconsin's school forest as presented. No problem.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mrs. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Krikowski?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much, guys.
I've been waiting to see you.
Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for having us.
So thank you guys very much.
All right.
Approval of our minutes, regular session from November 23rd. Questions on those, comments? Concerns, added marks, anything?
Nice.
I, I moved to approve the minutes of the November 23rd, 2020, regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second? I move to second to approve the minutes in November 23rd, 2020, regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yeah.
Mr. Wannell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Krikowski?
Motion carried. General fund bills.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 141-542 through 141-680, wire numbers 515-537, ACH check numbers 154 through 177, adoption renovation wire numbers 499 to 500, the combined amount of $985,242.55. Then there's a memo providing some information on several of the bills, then a copy of the treasures report to the month of November. Questions for Mr. Fisher?
I just had one question. What, what is the Otis software?
The Otis software is the software that we purchased last year for the elementary and possibly future middle school standard-based report card and instructional warehouse tool for those staff.
Got it.
Represents the renewal for that.
Other questions? Are there none with the motion?
I move to approve...
Go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve the general other fund bills of December 14th, 2020, check numbers 141-542 to 141-680, wire numbers 515 to 537, ACH check numbers 154 to 177, and options renovation wire numbers 499 to 500, in the combined amount of $985,242.55 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I move and second to approve the general other fund bills of December 14th, 2020, checks number 141-542 to 141-680, wire numbers 515-537, ACH check numbers 154 to 177, options renovation wire numbers 499 to 500, the combined amount of $985,242.55 as presented. No problem.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Krikowski?
Yeah.
Motion carried. According to special item student report.
So at the high school, the student council organized a giving tree for its founder, Scholmer Schuster. And fortunately, all of the ornaments were gone within the first two days. We're not happy to see that. This week, we are doing a holiday gift giveaway. And academic awards were passed out on Tuesday during our student success time. At the middle school, avid students packaged 255 bags of meals for children's world impact. The student council at the middle school is holding a fundraiser by selling candy candies during lunch and the forensic team being practicing this week. At Tibbetts, the Tibbetts PTA sponsored a virtual giving tree and it only took 11 hours for all of the gifts to take it off the tree. At Westside, students learned how to code robots that can detect colors as it moves along a path. And the PTA is encouraging families to use Amazon Smile as they buy Christmas presents. So part of those proceeds go to Westside. At Jackson, the PTA is selling craft kits as a fundraiser. And the student council is hosting a 12-day gift gift swap. At Options, they have one more week of classes left at the temporary building. And students learn the importance of vitamins and reading nutrition facts by extracting iron from cereal using magnets. Options High School was awarded a $1,000 grant for suicide prevention. And then at the Career College Academy, like she said, today was Gateway Day, where they learn about opportunities within Gateway Technical College. And they partnered with Hour of Code, MKET Tech Hub, and Gateway Technical College to participate in the Hour of Code and computer science.
Just go, because you've got your question.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rita Gaffes. I'm the Director of Special Education and People's Services. And tonight I have on my People's Services hat. And tonight I want to talk to you about how we've continued to strengthen our multi-level systems to support the new area of social and emotional learning throughout the district. First of all, just a reminder that by the end of this, we want to understand how our multi-level systems of support and SCL has developed, what has happened over the last five years, and then what our latest and newest curriculum, curriculum that we are using in all levels. I want to talk to you about what we've come up on this year. Just three terms I want to make sure you're familiar with is our Tier One, which means our universal level of instruction for all, and that's what all students get. Tier Two is when we add some targeted supports for students. And Tier Three is intensive and usually that's just for fewer students. And that's usually individualized. And this year, we've really worked on increasing our Tier One universal instruction in social emotional learning for all students. Quick reminder about what SCL is. It stands for Social Emotional Learning. And it's an integral part of all human development as well as our educational system. And students are involved in social emotional learning throughout their day and throughout all of their years while they're in school. And emphasis being on their self-awareness, their ability to manage themselves emotionally, their social awareness in interacting with other people, relationship skills, and then how do they make responsible decisions? So where do we start? Five years ago, we had a lot of good things going on. And we did a lot of really good things at, in the 15, 16 school year. But there really wasn't a lot of structure to what we were doing, a lot of direction. In 1607, we started trying to look at this in a more systematic, systemic approach. And we, and that was the same time that Department of Public Construction came out with their mental health framework. And we adopted that, started using that to look at our entire mental health framework in the school district and social emotional skills falls within that mental health framework. In 1718, we continued to build and work on our framework. We added a tool called MIMUs for teachers in our district. And we promoted a lot of staff self-care that year. In 1819, our focus was on trauma, which again is part of that mental health framework. And all those things listed on the right-hand side were things that people, staff engaged in as far as training and building their knowledge base again. And that was also the year that we partnered with the county and brought on our Handle With Care program. And all our staff received training in trauma sensitivity. And the police and the sheriff's department partnered with us for our Handle With Care calls for when someone in law enforcement goes to a house and then our staff is informed, or not all, the entire staff, the staff that work on the kids. And they're just told, please, you know, have an extra special eye on this kid today. So then, last year, we went and started a three-year implementation plan to implement our life-ready competencies for those socially emotional learning competencies. And as you looked at this, SCL can be looked at in the classroom from a three-legged stool. One leg of the stool is a supportive classroom environment. Second leg of the stool is integration of SCL into instruction. And then the third leg is explicit SCL instruction or direct instruction of socially emotional learning skills, socially emotional skills, just like we would teach math or we would teach reading. SCL is not always incidentally learned or learned at home. And so we, there's times where we have to directly teach these skills to kids. So last year, we started at the Tier One, universal level. And we emphasized that first, the far-left leg of the stool there, which is a supportive classroom environment, which we really emphasized with all teachers, building that safe, secure environment within the classroom and creating strong relationships with our students. And we saw when we went into remote learning then last year, to virtual learning, how important that was. And again, teachers had to reestablish those strong relationships online with kids. And our staff did an amazing job doing that because our participation in virtual learning was really very good. And much of that, all of that credit goes to those teachers who form those strong relationships with those kids and create soft, safe and secure environments within the classroom for those kids to attend. Okay, one, just to make sure. Oh, and at that time last year, we also did an audit of our explicit universal instruction in SCL, which is that front leg of the stool. But after we did that, we, oh, this is still last year. So these are some of the other things that we've worked on last year. We, we got money from the mental health grant. We piloted a screener for socially emotional learning. We increased and expanded our availability of credence counselors to come into the building. And we spent more money on that. We organized our Tier Two strategies, which is group work. And like I said, we really worked on the relationship and building a culture that was safe, secure for our students. We also began our Hope Squad, which is a peer-to-peer intervention program for, for suicide prevention. We began that last year as well. So this year, we really wanted to emphasize that Tier One universal instruction for all students at all levels in all schools. And so what we added, due to the mental health grant, we've been able to add quite a few pieces of curriculum. At the elementary level, we had implemented something called Zones of Regulation, where kids learn to identify their emotions and learn to identify emotions in other people, identify how their body feels, and then learn strategies to manage their emotions. At the middle school level, we are using what's called the second step curriculum. And what's nice about this is that this is a continuation of the second step curriculum that the school counselors are already using at the elementary level. And then at high school, we were able to purchase a curriculum called Character Strong. And all of these are aligned with the Wisconsin Department of Public Construction SCL competencies and fall within the castle model that we're using. So at the elementary level, well, really at all three levels, these lessons are made by the school counselors, social workers, school psychs, through the People's Services team, and they're prepackaged. And then they go out to the general education teachers. And then at the elementary level, they're worked into the basic academic time. And the middle school, they're worked into the wind time. And at the high school, they're doing that, during that student success time. So I'm sure you've seen some of those lessons, right?
Yeah.
And so this is a way to ensure that all students are getting it. And what we're also doing is we're building the capacity of our general education teachers at the same time. Because they're involved in presenting the lessons to the students, but it, they don't have to do any extra work. It's all been pre-made and given to them. It was interesting when the A teachers talking about making the modules and, you know, the totes and they're ready. Well, this is kind of what we've done, packaged things electronically for the general education teachers. So the theory of action that we're working under is that we want to build strong foundational support and plan for implementing SCL, which I think we have over the last several years, strengthen our adult SCL competencies and our capacity, which we are continuing to do, especially now in light of COVID. This year's been stressful emotionally on a lot of teachers. And so supporting teachers emotionally by different things that we decide to do and things we decide not to do as administration, I think it's been very helpful. Promoting SCL for all students. And then we want to be able to reflect on our data for continuous improvement. And just keeping in mind that, you know, we're not looking for a final product here. This is a process and that is ongoing and throughout all of our lives. I'm sure there, when I look at myself right now and I look at relationships that I have in my life, certainly the relationship I have with my husband 30 years ago is not the same as the one I have now. We've all emotionally changed and grown and developed throughout our entire lives. Hopefully, we're giving them that strong foundation to build on here at El Porary School District. So next steps, we're going to hit that third leg of the stool next year. We want to increase our use of data. We want to solidify our Tier Two system into systems. And you want that third leg of the stool there is to integrate SCL instruction into just instruction. So how can every general education teacher, if they're delivering a math lesson, how is it that you're integrating socially emotional learning within that lesson? Or if it's a science lesson or a FIAID lesson? You know, what are the competencies that you can work on while you're delivering instruction in other curricular areas? And of course, I am just the messenger here. So much work has been done by such a large group of people. I really want to thank ADG in Sarabash for their partnership in all of this. They really, you know, they are the curriculum experts and they have worked really hard with the teams to be able to package this and get this out to the general education teachers and this counselor psychologist, social workers, and the administrators at all the schools and the general education teachers who are putting those lessons out to the students. I have to thank all of them because it's really been a great team effort. So I'm just merely the messenger here.
No, great, great plan and such an important topic. And glad to see it's been implemented and it's, you know, this is just the start of it. And it's something that I'm glad that we are engaging in at all levels. It's just a very important thing for all students. I'm glad it's touching everybody. And that we have the specific steps in place for those individuals that need that special guide. So thank you.
I think the thing that I, the tagline that I use all the time, do not Tier Two and Tier Three ourselves out of ineffective Tier One. You know, inadequate Tier One. And I think this year, working at that universal level, increasing that curriculum and having it go to all students, and it's like in the three elementary schools, it's the same. It just, I think that's really going to help us, help our kids. I think it's really going to help our kids. And, you know, we should see, you know, hopefully a decrease in kids who have to have small group instruction at the Tier Two level or individual counseling at the Tier One level or at the Tier Three level. There is, you know, there's been some struggles by some kids because of COVID and the isolation and different family dynamics. And so we are, you know, utilizing our... and different family dynamics. And so we are, you know, utilizing our tier-three with our credence counselors. And our school counselors are busy as well, but I think we're doing a good job. Thank you, Mr. Scarrow.
I've seen it as a parent trying to have the kids know more. I mean, even doing a math lesson, he says, like, how do we incorporate that? My son doesn't want to write down every step. He just wants to skip to the bottom and teaching the like skills with notes, stations, and, you know, we're gonna write it all out. We're gonna go through it all. But like, trying to, it had really nothing to do with math. It was just, you know.
So how do you?
Get it done and let's go, move on.
Yeah. How do you do that as a math teacher when students are frustrated or, you know, how do you bring them back?
It was more about emotion.
And we're incorporating a lot of things. I know at the high school level, when we went to the the five-period day, you know, teachers had to learn how to give brain breaks and those types of things. That's all part of, you know, that's social emotional learning, learning how to manage, you know, your brain and control your anxiety and your boredom and all those other things, you know.
We're seeing it a lot now that the kids are on the screen, especially at home. Because one minute they're on and the next minute they're in the hallway and they're gone and they're doing something. I'm like, I thought you're in science class right now. What are you doing? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I just, you know, like, I mean, keeping them, you know, on task.
How do you, how do you take a break? What's an appropriate break? You know, we want them to learn how to take brain breaks and control their emotions in healthy manners because the other alternatives that are, you know, drugs and alcohol are other things that, you know, are gonna give their brains break that we don't want them to engage in. And then we're dealing with more tier-two and tier-three interventions, right? And let's be preventative in nature rather than intervening after there, you know, there's been troubles. So I really appreciate the support that the school board and the district has really had. And Mr. Tannock's been a great supporter of all this. I really appreciate the movement that we've had. And I also, Kelly Demerath, I'd be remiss in not mentioning her. She was the one who applied for the school-based mental health grant that we got for the last two years, which has been great. And we will be applying again this year.
Thank you very much.
Options, renovations.
Okay, they are moving right along. It's always amazing how much they get done in the last two to three weeks. I'm gonna look because we didn't extend our lease. It is looking quite a bit different. They've got quite a few of the windows in. The brown will be gone. Those are more pieces of glass that are yet to arrive. But the building will have quite a bit of a different feel when you've got four ceiling windows in there.
That looks great.
You'll have a new fascia around the, you know, around the top that's not on yet. But that metal paneling will start to get installed pretty soon, 70 years ago. The lockers are all in the process of getting the repainted, yep.
A shamrock.
No, the shamrocks is actually quite, I'm sure it was very creative at the moment when the person put the vinyl or the latex paint on the lockers. But I mean, repainting them, kind of a hassle and the prep work for that. The cabinets look great. They're like a gray wood. Tell them that they look very nice, the counter trees. And the rooms, again, when the rooms are done, they're gonna look brand new because they'll have all new flooring, all new ceiling. And the walls will be, you know, repainted, the boards, yeah. So they're not quite there yet, but it's getting there. And they're confident they'll be done on time. But the majority of the work, there'll be some work that's still gonna be ongoing after they move in, begin utilizing. The gym, I think, is the last, you know, there's a lot of staging in there. And then once everything else is done, I think that'll be the last. That's again, the kitchen area, but all the infrastructure, the new piping, the electrical runs, all of that's pretty much done and they're getting into finishing.
So we took all that old flooring off the kitchen.
All the flooring's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as they're doing it, do it now before the kids arrive.
Yeah, Bill and I were talking about that the other day. We're so grateful that this, you know, refer in the past, we're able to just get it all done because trying to piece all this together from year after year, I mean, it's very extensive work to get it all done. But we will have a like-new building, you know, a fraction of the cost of it. Yeah.
So we took out, we took out all that old ceiling. We did. But that was another thing that really, you know, I had a hard time with.
Yep.
It was the worst.
Everything's abated, everything's gone. The basement, we filled in, the lower part of the basement.
Oh, okay, good.
That's all filled in. So.
They should have all the flooring, well, they hope they have all the flooring done maybe by the end of this week.
Oh, really? The epoxy floor?
The epoxy, the E C T in the classrooms, everything. So we'll see if they make that, but that's their goal.
Yeah, I definitely want to take a tour when we're done.
Yeah, and go out to plan an open house or a tour or something like that. And, you know, as recently, I've read more posts or social media griping in relation to the old Lakeland School.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm glad I am that we're able to make use of and bring this school back up to speed.
And I think, I think neighbors will appreciate it, you know, as well as other people who went there for, for cool.
Yeah. All right.
Jason?
Yes.
I did see that when you're on H there, that there's still a sign that says, when the arrow that says to St. Patrick's School. I wanted to make sure that it's changed.
The road sign, the road sign.
By the city, is it city-owned probably?
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
So I want to ask them to update those.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to COVID updates. I mean, these links are here for you to look at on a daily basis. These get updated and they change hour by hour. So you're only as good when, this is when Jody updates at eight o'clock in the morning that day. So roughly though, last time, when I looked at what we'll see this afternoon, we basically have about 96 people quarantined and or isolated due to COVID. I think it was 10 who were positive with COVID. Those are the numbers from the district. We're seeing, you know, I was really disappointed last week, to be honest. And actually, a lot of them came out right after my weekly update on that Friday where we had instances of people who had to get quarantined. And to be frank, if the families had followed the procedures that we'd outlined, their kids weren't even having been quarantined. Parents sending their kids sick when they were sick or parents sending their kids sick when, after the kid had been sick and gotten, gotten tested for COVID and then sent them back the next day while waiting for the test results. So it's frustrating when you have to go and tell a family that your kid's gotta be out for the next X number of days. And I don't know, we just need, we need families to do a better job of being over, not even overly, just all of the guidelines that we give you and do what we ask. And it would significantly reduce the number of people left. So that's a little frustrating to be frank. Our school data sheet, you can see, and I think we'll go back down over the break again. But if the general public's behavior doesn't change, what I am concerned about is, here we go. You know, we ran a long time at those lower rates, so that's because our, the rates within the community and the county were low. Then we saw those rates of the county and the community really spike up leading into that Thanksgiving time. That's why we went to that remote learning time. And we did drive them back down as we thought we would. But you can see, we're back up, you know, in that 100 range. And if our community rate, our community rate has dropped as well. But if it goes back up, there's, you know, likely we'll see this rate go up as well. And just so the board has an awareness of it, there's certain segments of our staffing group. And one right now, the bus company stretched really thin because they have a number of people out due to quarantines and/or COVID. So even this afternoon, they had to double up a couple routes. So you may hear things along those lines. That's probably our most vulnerable infrastructure that we have is from that busing. Now, you know, there's things we can do, doubling up routes or, you know, kids arriving to school late. It's not ideal. It's better than closing down school altogether. But, you know, they just don't have a large pool of subs. You have to have special licensure. You can't just fuck people off the street to go and drive the bus. So that's where we're at right now. Again, I think, you know, we'll make it through the weekend. My goal and my hope is that we don't have to go remote again for the remainder of the year. I'd like to be face-to-face. And I think we could make it, but we do need better cooperation from the families. And I don't know, you know, doing a video message. I thought about coming to the board. If we have families and perhaps putting something in place that if a family blatantly disregards the protocols, maybe they need to be quarantined for them, meaning you're online because we can't trust you not to disregard the protocol. I don't know what else.
Once they've already had it. We don't see a lot of reinfection, so it's kind of, that's kind of a negative, in a way, like a negative.
I know, it's me just being.
I know. No, I, no, it's being frustrated, being very, very frustrated. And I understand.
I don't want to punish the kids, like parents say, the parents of schools, but if it was like, I don't, I mean, you can't really give them community service hours or a fine either, but.
In an apartment, when you have a large family, my family just went through it. I think most people know that. I had COVID, we forced, we were able to isolate and separate. But like, with a family of five, it's very easy that if we have been able to separate and make sure that nobody else got it, it very easily could drag out a little bit from one to the next and so forth. And I would say, a lot of people, it's very innocent. And I think what makes it difficult is the symptoms manifest very mildly in the kids. And so it's like, oh, it's probably not that. And they go ahead and, you know, send them back. Or the kid, you know, really wants to be in school. Nobody wants to be home. But when the rates are as high as they are, it definitely had to increase the likelihood of it being COVID potential. So this is good. We're at 90.11, which is critical. A couple of weeks ago, I believe we were in the 250 range for the Elkhorn area boundary on our rate per 10,000. So it's down quite a bit. That's good. And hopefully, we can develop. Any question on the COVID numbers? All right.
So I have. Three days because she was tired one day. So it's just, you know, it's, it's one of those symptoms. So I, and it really wasn't that she was tired. It's just a blind date or something.
And it's hard. I mean, my youngest, my youngest has been home three different times for 72 hours. And that's a lot of school days. That's his first hundred. And then on top of that, he had a quarantine. So he's missed, you know, quite a bit.
Like in the old days, you know, that same situation when my daughter, if he tired, I would have said, well, just send her to school.
Yeah.
You know, you need to just go to school. But not right now, you just can't do it.
All right. There, I feel better right then.
Recommendation, district minister or personnel?
Personnel recommendations. We have the retirement of Lori Mullin. I want to thank her for all of her service. She is currently serving as a custodian for Westside Elementary. She'll be retiring on March 19th. And then we have the resignation of John Espinoza, who's been serving as a custodian at Jackson. His last day will be December 18th. I want to wish them both the best. So we have the appointment of Kalen Fergat is a cook's helper at the high school. This will be a new position. That's all I have for the personnel.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December 14, 2020, including new employment contract conditions of the fund, passing the background check in district. Then they did drug screening and.
Is there a second? I'm moving to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December 14, 2020, including new employment contracts, condition of fund pass in the background check in district. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Berkowski?
Yes.
Motion carried. School gifts. I do not have any gifts to report tonight.
2021, 22 budget development.
Can we just finish the last budget? I say that.
We did. It's a never-ending process. It seems that way. So traditionally, the boards approved a calendar, a planning document. Basically, as we start the process of working on our annual budget. So this is the 21, 22 school budget. The dates on here were updated to reflect, you know, new calendar dates, but the process is very similar to previous years. I did include in here, traditionally, we've had have that March get-together retreat. So I did put a date in there. I think it's the second Saturday of March. If the boards are interested in continuing with that process. One of the things I, I kind of, as I was sitting here, I kind of titled this, the recovery budget. This is kind of the term I started to use because hopefully we'll be back to regular operations all around. I, I think this might be because we're entering a new state budget for the next two years. There's gonna be a lot of uncertainty with funding at the state level. So it's gonna create probably a lot of unknowns for us as we enter this process. But that's not totally, you know, unusual. And that, there's certain information we don't know anyway. But I think this year is gonna be potentially even more of a challenge simply because of that uncertainty. I think that creates a conservative approach across the board, especially at the state level, simply because they don't know what funding needs to kind of look like at the state level. So my guess is our typical timeframes of making decisions may have to be moved back simply because of that.
I think so, right.
We'll see how it goes.
Any questions on the calendar? All right. So I need to approve the calendar, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the 2021, 2022 budget development calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm moving second to approve the 2021, 2022 budget development calendar as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Berkowski? I noticed Mr. Reed joined us. Mr. Reed?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Second reading of new and revised policies.
Yeah, I have not received any further feedback regarding any of the policies unless there's one that I'd like to specifically discuss or review. I, I hear a team motion.
Very none, looking for a motion.
I move to approve new policy employment of personnel for athletic slash extracurricular activities. Revised policies 420, school admissions and 443 Elkhorn area student conduct. And to delete policies 535.2 extracurricular duty assignments and 535.2 rule coaching assignments as presented.
Second, is there a second? I'm moving second to approve new policy employment of personnel for athletic extracurricular activities. Revised policies for 20 school admissions and 443 Elkhorn area student conduct. And to delete policies 535.2 extracurricular duty assignments and also delete 535.2 rule coaching assignments as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Berkowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
I'm carrying any announcements?
All right. Next board meeting will not be until January 11, 2021.
Now, 2020, we like that.
Just a reminder, we do have a closed session to review school safety drill summaries. And we were recognized it was. And, uh, we were recognized it was published today by, from Project Lead the Way for our community service during the COVID timeframe as a district of the month in December. So, um, that's, we posted out on social media related to that. So that was quite an honor to be receive that national honor, so. And it was circled around our food distribution program that we did for the entire community, the adults and the kids, partnering with the bus company and so on.
All right, this is Ted Lex interview, closed session, looking for a motion this year.
I move to adjourn the closed session pursuant to a state statute 19.851D to review the written evaluations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and or to adjourn.
Is there a second? It is a move is second to adjourn a closed session pursuant to a state statute 19.851D to review the written evaluations of the school safety drills. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and or to adjourn.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowski?
Yeah.
And Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.